We now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Minister Makin, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Casello.
Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before this Commission meeting with heavy hearts this evening over the things that we have witnessed in this country. But we know that in your word you say that a divided house shall not stand, so we shall come together in this Commission meeting with one mind and one purpose, to do the right thing and to do those things for righteousness sake. God, we know that you say in your word that blessed are the peacemakers, so we're here to devise plans and strategies to bring peace to the city of Boynton Beach, but not just Boynton Beach, but the healing and blessings all over this land. God, touch the hearts of the parents that have lost their children in a situation that was not of your doing, but the will of the evil dweller. But we know he has no power and no dominion in his place. United we stand and divided we fall. This great country has been blessed to be the great United States of America, and if we stand united, we shall be able, not only through your power, but the power that you have invested in us, to eradicate every evil deed and every devil situation that shall come upon us. So we hang our heads low, but we still walk with pride this evening, knowing that you are the great intercessor and you are the great comforter. Bless each person that came, give them travel and grace, protection over their homes, and heal their heavy hearts, and we pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
And Commissioner Joe Casella.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Moving on to agenda approval, any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mayor, before us you'll see a couple of resolutions that I had asked the city attorney to draw up as templates for possible, this Commission, it's a resolution dealing with guns, bump stocks, large caliber magazines. I understand that we're preempted by state law as far as making our own local laws here, which is sad in its own, but at least this will be a, it'll be something towards how we actually feel about these automatic weapons, these AR-15s and such. So I would ask that we put them under new business and take a look at them and see if the Commission would like to go forward to having one of our own resolutions written up.
All right. Anything else? Yes, Vice Chair, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just what'll likely be two quick items, I hope. Under new business, discussion about assigning a city representative for the upcoming Quantum Property Owners Association meeting, because we have interest in property in there and we should have someone there who could vote on our behalf. And a second item, potentially trying to schedule a joint meeting of the City Commission and the Quantum Park Overlay dependent district to discuss some business going on there. I know that in their meetings they've requested that we give them direction on some things, and I think the only way for that to happen is to, they have a designated representative who happens to also be a city employee, so if we could potentially discuss scheduling a special meeting, joint workshop between Quantum Park Overlay and the City Commission to discuss some of their ongoing business.
One of my requests is that we move up item 13A to in front of consent agenda. Is that okay? All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is Representative from South Tech here this evening? For some reason it wasn't added on the agenda, but I would like to add an agenda item to disperse my discretionary funds for South Tech regarding their film festival. I'm not sure what happened, but that should have been on the agenda for this meeting tonight.
That's also under new business.
Yes.
Do you want, would you like that also moved up?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll put that as 12D right after, or right before 13A in front of consent agenda.
Mayor, I apologize, but I need to go back to where you said move legal A.
13A. Consider a real estate purchase and sale agreement between the City of Boynton Beach and Brittany Bumgarter for a vacant parcel at the end of Southwest 24th Avenue.
Where are that, sir? What were we moving it up to?
In front of consent agenda.
Thank you.
And we'll also have the item 12D, community support funds for South Tech's film festival. All right.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none. Agenda is approved. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commission, Vice Chair, would you like to begin?
Sure, I met with representatives from the Olin Group as well as Doug McDonald on behalf of the Property Owners Association in Quan, and that's it. And I also spoke to the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce.
All right. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, sir. I also spoke to the Olin Group, Doug McDonald, and I had a phone call from one of the lawyers. I can't call his name right now, but anyway, I did do that. But anyway, I really want to say in regards to the Robert E. Wells Love Fest, I was looking for Minister Wright. I do not see him here tonight, but I want to publicly say to the city staff, CRA, thank you for a job well done. I also like to say, let have it noted for Minister Wright, it was a lovely affair. He did a lot of work, and I'm just trying to see if we can kind of like get unity and the Robert E. Wells Love Fest, they all placed to be just one entity in district too, so that we could all work together for one common cause, because after all it is for the city of Boynton. I'd like for staff, next time we have these coming up, y'all can kind of like get together and see if we could do one big, you know, with the CRA and also with staff, you know, and also with the Robert E. Wells, so we could just have one big day instead of having little piecemeals here, one there, and everything will fall in place. I'd like to say to Mr. Livergood, good afternoon, sir. Thank you for putting up the no parking signs, although there was a speed chase over there. I do need to let you know about that, where the police officers was chasing a car through there, that's how it got torn down. Okay, so we're gonna have to have a meeting probably with the chief and Lori, there's a young lady that called me, I'm just saying, you know, having a chase through a community. What they told me, it did not sit well with me. I'm still kind of a little upset about it, but we do need to have a conversation with the young lady that did make a phone call to me. I was looking to see if the guy was here from solid waste, I do not see him, but I want to say to him, thank you, and also to staff for parks. That was an incident that happened out at the racquetball court, where some homeless guy, for whatever reason, it was brought to my attention that he had moved, I guess about three months of his own personal stuff. He thought he could live there, and it was in there, and staff, you all went out there and cleaned it up, although he said he's going to sue us, I started laughing, but not at him, but I'm just, I want to know how can you sue somebody when you move on their property, but that was another job well done. I have been making phone calls about mattresses being in the right of way, they have been cordial, picking them up and everything, and I'm just saying to the person that we have in David, who's over the public works now, Lori, you all have a jewel, let's work with him. If I don't make him leave, he'll stay here a long time, thank you.
Commissioner Romulus.
No disclosures to make today, but I do just want to take a moment to comment on a few things. First and foremost, I want to not only send thoughts and prayers to the families and the individuals affected in Parkland, but I want to stand in solidarity with them. As a mother, as an educator, that situation hit me very, very deep to the core, and it was very scary to understand that this is the time and place in which we live here in the United States. I find myself as a teacher now, double and triple checking my doors to make sure that they're locked when I go in before I teach a class, and this is something that I never really had to ever do in the past, and I find myself always looking at emergency exits, considering plans of exit for my students if something were to start. So this is something that is very troubling, it's very disturbing, and something must be done. So again, in addition to just thoughts and prayers, I also stand in solidarity with those individuals in Parkland going through this right now. On a different note, I want to again wish you all happy Black History Month, and in celebration of Black History Month, I am donning my beautiful African skirt this evening. Also, in just happy celebration of the release of Black Panther, the movie, if you haven't seen it, go see it, I'm also celebrating that. So I think we're doing some great things here for Black History Month, and it's an exciting time to be here and to be alive, and 2018 is fantastic, so thank you all. That's all I have today for tonight.
Commissioner Casello.
No disclosures, but I'm glad I, earlier in the evening I gave Commissioner Romulus a compliment on her dress, I didn't know the significance of the dress, but thank you for sharing that. Also, like the rest of the country and the world, send our thoughts and prayers. The thoughts and prayers is not going to stop what's been happening in our country here in our schools, and being a father of a 17-year-old girl who's a senior at Boynton High, I can just tell you this, and saying goodbye, I love you in the morning, has a whole new meaning. So hug your children, kiss them, tell them how much you love them, and let's try to get this thing resolved at some level of, at the federal level, the state level, the local level, whatever level we have to bring this to, let's unify this thing. This, enough is enough, folks. Thank you.
Mayor, let me mention one more thing. Do you want to say that today is Commissioner Casello's birthday, so happy birthday to Commissioner Casello. He just turned 25, can you tell?
For the third time.
On February 9th, I attended the Magic Wheels and Special Deals event held at our Barrier Free Park, was able to do the ribbon cutting for our new playground equipment. For those who have not been to our Barrier Free Park, there is also new solar panels installed, and so I'm very much looking forward to seeing those connected to the grid, and I did the Barrier Free 5K, and it said walk, run, or roll, and so I put on my roller blades to roll in it. The following week, I attended a ride-along with Sergeant Dunlop and Rivera. I think it was very informative to learn what our sergeants and officers have to go through, and so if anyone from the Commission who has not done a ride-along, I highly suggest you contact our Chief Harris and so that we can get this, so you can understand what exactly our officers and sergeants are going through on the road. I attended the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agencies meeting up in Palm Beach Gardens, and will be attending their Complete Streets Summit next month. Then on February 17th, I attended the Spady Cultural Heritage Museum Day. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I think there's something that we need to plan in our CRA is having that black history cultural place that we are lacking in Boynton Beach, and so I think we'll talk a little bit about that on the CRA board, more so when the MLK discussion goes on. I attended, I played golf at the Links, and it was a great day to play golf at the Links. The course is looking good, the greens are great, and I was able to hit a couple of pars, so I was very happy. And then yesterday, I attended a rally against gun violence over in Del Ray. Correct, there's something that needs to be done, enough is enough, and the main thing that needs to happen is that we need to keep people accountable. So one of the big things now is that looking to see who takes money from the National Rifle Association. We need to do, have gun legislation, and we can't talk about it here, but hopefully the people will talk about it to their state representatives and their federal representatives. I did speak with Michael Weiner and Brittany Bumgarter today, and that is it for me. Anything? Yes?
Thank you. For that attorney, I did not remember his name, thank you, that was Michael Weiner. Okay, I also like to go ahead and say, I requested a copy of what we were sitting up for the selection of a police chief here in the city of Boynton, and I really got a copy of the flyer, the information. I just want to tell staff, this is what I'd be looking for, what I'm saying, we're trying to advertise and get people to come. Lori, I want to tell you and staff, I don't know who's taking responsibility for doing this, but a job well done, colorful, and if I wasn't so good, I might even apply. Thank you.
All right. Next, proclaim the week of February 25th, 2018 as Eating Disorders Awareness Week. Catherine Herman, the Director of Development from the Alliance for Eating Disorders Awareness, will be accepting the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas eating disorders affect 30 million individuals in the United States during their lifetimes, with more than 600,000 individuals in the state of Florida alone, and whereas eating disorders, including the specific disorders of anorexia nervosa, bulimia nervosa, binge eating disorder, avoidant restrictive food intake disorder, and other specified feeding or eating disorders are complex biological-based illnesses, and whereas eating disorders are associated with serious physical health consequences, including irregular heartbeats, heart disease and heart failure, kidney failure, osteoporosis, gastric rupture, tooth decay, obesity, gallbladder disease, diabetes, and death. And whereas at least once every 62 minutes, someone dies due to their struggle with an eating disorder, and anorexia nervosa has the highest mortality rate of any mental illness, and eating disorders know no boundaries with respect to genders, age, races, ethnicities, body shapes and weights, sexual orientations, and socio-economic statuses. And whereas eating disorders have a high prevalence amongst active military service members and veterans, and whereas with early detection and intervention, full recovery from any eating disorder is possible. And now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of February 25th to March 3rd as 2018 as Eating Disorders Awareness Week.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. First, just I want to thank you all for your time, and while this is so important to us, I would be not okay to say thank you all for acknowledging the recent events, and I think that all of our country, all of this town needs to hear those words, so thank you. And then for everyone's time here, eating disorders, like you said, have the highest mortality rate of any mental illness, and these are our children, these are our sons, these are our daughters, our parents, our brothers, our sisters, everyone in our community. And I just want to say that there are resources here, we are based in West Palm Beach, have six free support groups on almost every day of the week, that are the only ones in the country that are clinician-led, so please come by, please call if you need anything. And we also have an awareness walk in Coconut Creek on Saturday, March 3rd, so please join us, and thank you for being part of Smashing the Stigma. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Excuse me, I just wanted to tell the young lady, I want to tell you, thank you for, you know, bringing it to our awareness when I was in college a couple days ago. I did do a research paper on anorexia nervosa, thank you for a job well done, I know what it's all about, appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have announcement by Michael Corbett, Director of Business Development for Career Source Palm Beach County regarding a construction trades hiring event on Tuesday, February 27th, from 3:30 PM to 6:00 PM at Carolyn Sims.
Good evening. My name is Michael Corbett, I'm with Career Source Palm Beach County, and one week from today, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on the 27th, we have a job there at the Carolyn Sims Center. We have room for 35 companies, we have 16 signed up so far, and please, this is a good event to try to get folks into the construction and trades industries. Eleanor has done a great job with the flyer, sending it out to the city and residents and so forth, so I'll give you an update once this is over, how many people get hired, but thank you for your support.
Can I ask you, how many unions have you reached out to, trade, trade unions?
Sure. The electricians, the plumbers, and sheet metal so far. Is somebody else that we should be reaching out to?
Sean Mitchell, I'm sure you know who Sean Mitchell is. I got a call today, and they were a little disappointed that he didn't tell me these other unions, like you say, had been contacted, that none of the unions had been contacted.
We have.
So I encourage you that, you know, we talk careers, you know, union, I think this is a great opportunity to get them all on board with this. I think they would really appreciate a call from you, sir.
They usually show up at these events, I'm surprised you didn't hear about that.
I think an invite would be nice.
Of course, yes. Anything else?
Yes, before you sit down, did you design this flyer or was this done by staff?
We did it. Career Source did it.
Sorry, Eleanor, but anyway, it's a job well done.
She's done a good job pushing it out for us, though.
I can't, thank you.
Thank you.
No more announcements, moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Good evening. Mary Law, 625 South Federal Highway in Boynton Beach. To the mayor, the commissioners, the city manager, and the city attorney, the communities, can you hear me okay? The Community Standards Division, Glenn Wexler, in July of 2017, charged Lucy Land LLC with erroneous code violations at 703 South Federal Highway, an unpermitted fence that cars cannot be parked there. On February 27th, 2013, we received a final fence approval by Glenn Wexler. In July 2017, when he issued us a code violation, he obviously didn't, did no permit research, and he seems to have forgotten he approved the fence. That violation has been verbally dismissed, but the Community Standards, Mr. Woods, would not eliminate it from the violation paperwork, so it continues to be printed each time with the other violation. It is intended to continually make us look like we are a violator. In September 2016, Mary O'Fagor, President of Camel Towing, leased an office at 625 South Federal Highway for his towing business, and in the lease, we gave him the right to park cars at 625 and 703 South Federal Highway. He gave the Business Tax Office the application for business certificate of use and the required documents as so stated on the back of this form, the lease and his checks for licenses. He also gave them the tenant landlord verification form, which was not a written requested item. On September 26th, 2016, the Business Tax Office issued him two business tax receipts, a general warehouse storage which cost him $243.11, and offices executive administration cost him $97.24. Then, seven months later, the city issued a code violation against us, instructing us to remove the camel towing cars from 703 South Federal Highway. We had no legal authority to remove their cars, as they had a lease with us, and the city issued them two business tax licenses on September 26th, 2016. This harassment by the city caused them to move, and we lost a very professional business. The Boynton Beach Florida Code of Ordinance says Article 1, Business Tax Receipts and Certificate of Use, Section 13-9. Issue of certificate of use, C.
Excuse me, Mary, I'm sorry, but your time is up. The question that you might want to ask the board is, is that do we want to discuss this, because we can't discuss it on public audience? So do you want to ask us if we can discuss this item for you?
Well, yes, I would like to file a motion to dismiss.
Okay. Does the board want to do a motion reconsideration?
I need to hear from staff before I vote to do anything.
Just add this as a future agenda, I'm going to discuss it at a later time.
Okay.
I didn't hear that.
I think we're going to add it to the future agenda for next Commissioner meeting.
Okay, but I have a hearing before the magistrate tomorrow, and they're not going to know what to do with this, because it's not a code violation, it's a city mistake.
Then that's the magistrate that we've hired to make that decision.
All right.
If staff, excuse me, Mayor, if staff could just, I guess, send an email to inform the Commission regarding this situation, that way we can be brought up to speed, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Staff, you don't have to send me no email, phone call, because I have questions, that's all. Thank you.
Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. There are a lot of things going on at the museum at the moment, however, I am here this evening to sing the praises of the Boynton Beach Garden Club. For those of you who don't know, the Boynton Beach Garden Club planted and expertly maintains the butterfly garden on the east side of the museum. This beautiful garden has an array of plants that serve both as hosts and food source for a variety of butterflies, including the Atala butterfly, a nearly extinct butterfly that's been making a comeback in South Florida. It really is truly a pleasure to see the families, parents and children enjoying the butterfly garden. In addition to the butterfly garden, the garden club has hosted Art in Bloom for the last two years. The museum is delighted to be hosting the event again this year in conjunction with the student artwork from Plomosa Elementary School of the Arts. The Third Annual Art in Bloom will take place on March 2nd and 3rd. For those of you who are unfamiliar with Art in Bloom, it was an exhibit, it's an exhibit of floral arrangements interpreting artwork that was founded in Boston in 1976. The Boynton Beach Garden Club brought it to our area in 2016. This year, there'll be 12 works of art from students at Plomosa that will be interpreted, and the exhibit will be taking place in the classroom at the museum, it is free to the public. The museum will also be open for play for our regular prices, but we do encourage you to come and enjoy the artwork and the floral arrangements that the ladies have created. There is an opening night reception on March 2nd from 7, excuse me, from 5:00 until 7:00 PM, there'll be light bites and refreshments, and you can see the interpretations of the artwork at that time as well. We look forward to seeing you, and we encourage you to come join us. Art in Bloom.
And the date and time again?
It's March 2nd and 3rd, from, on the 3rd, it's from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM, the reception is on the 2nd from 5:00 until 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. First of all, I want to say, whoever's controlling the sound, we're having a hard time hearing you guys, the volume's down a little too low, so someone might want to turn those up a little bit. I'm coming about two things today. First of all, my usual rant on the trees on Ocean Avenue, they are still Pirate Fest colors, I said something at the CRA meeting, they have not been changed, I thought these were supposed to be changed to go with all the holidays throughout the year, I thought you guys created a calendar, and absolutely nothing has happened or changed. I would suggest if you're just going to pick a color and leave it, make it one of the warm white shades so that at least the trees will grow, because plants do not grow with green, purple, and blue lights shining on them, at least change them to white, because A, that will be more posh and elegant looking, and B, it will actually allow the plants to grow. My other thing, and poor Mark is going to get beat up tonight, I'm distressed that the situation with the house across the street from me, the guy did go to jail, yay, but now his sister, his girlfriend, and his baby mama, and yes, that's three different girls in the house, now have some other young boy in the house, and they are all stirring up trouble again. They are regularly threatening me, I had, I've had the police out twice in the last couple weeks, and I know it's been reported via the police's anonymous tip line, so that's three calls alone on this nuisance. What are we doing? I understand that there is some kind of lien being put against the house for the animal abuse charges, but what about the probably close to 100 phone calls to the police in the six years I've lived there? Next month will make six years I've lived in this house, and I know I alone have called probably 40, 50 times. What is going on? Why is nothing being done? They have rooms for rent, they don't have a BTR, I know I personally have sent photos in to Mark, I assume other people in the public have as well, because they're illegally renting rooms out in this house, or at least to the best of my knowledge, I'm not a lawyer. What's going on? There's noise problems, there are nuisance issues, at what point can we foreclose on this house and move this forward? You have a nuisance ordinance, let's use it. This is a prime example, this is one bad house in a very nice neighborhood, and what do we need to do to get rid of these people? And, you know, sending Pierre's not solving the problem, so we obviously need to send someone that's not Pierre. So thank you. Any comments?
I think this is for a long
I think it's for law enforcement, but I don't know if addressing this particular issue in a public forum and divulging whatever their actions have been or plan to be, I think that they need to speak to you directly, not so much.
Oh, I see them regularly when I call them out. So it's not like we're not all communicating, because these officers tell me, "We see you at commission meetings." They know me. I know them. That's not the issue. It's not that it's not being professional in any way, shape, or form. Just nothing is being done, and that's my issue at this point.
Susan, I will get that information from the city manager and the department heads that need to give that, and then I will get back to you with some kind of update.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Casello.
Not only will Commissioner Casello do it, we all will, but we need to follow protocol steps that we need to take, as not directed it tonight. So, Mr. Woods, if you can get that information to us. Thank you. We will follow.
Hello, good evening. My name is Carl Sloan, and I reside at 39 Hampshire Lane. I'm here today as chair of the Hunters Run Governmental Relations Committee. As you are aware, Hunters Run is a country club community of 1,650 homes, almost 2,800 residents. The residents are afraid to go to the Boynton Beach Mall. As you can read in the newspapers and see on television, it is not a safe venue. Our members are afraid to go there because of the lack of police protection or other safety offices. You must provide more protection. The failure to do so causes our members to travel to other centers for their shopping. That means the city of Boynton Beach loses sales tax revenue, and the shop owners lose income. Recently, these same conditions appear to exist at the Publix, located at the intersection of Congress Avenue and Boynton Beach Boulevard. The average age of our membership is in the mid-80s, and they want to be safe when they shop. We ask that you please do something. Another issue. Several months ago, you approved the construction of an impatient medical facility for memory care on the vacant corner of Congress Avenue and North Charter Drive. Hunters Run was very much in favor of this use, but please give us an update on where things are. Lastly, many members of Hunters Run subscribe to a website called Next Neighbors. Almost daily, Police Officer Stephanie Slater files a report listing the myriad police reports of incidents in Boynton Beach: shots fired, overdoses, stolen property, assaults, carjacking, murder, on and on. We are thankful that the Boynton Beach Police Department is actively protecting us, but we question why do we need to scare our residents with such vivid listings? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Harry Woodworth. I live at 685 Northeast 15th Place in Boynton. I just want to make a comment. Last night was our board of directors meeting for INCA, and we had a couple of new neighbors show up. Our meetings are open, so these guys showed up, a couple, two couples, that had just purchased homes in our waterfront community. And obviously, they knew what they were buying into. They're not blind. They drove up Federal Highway. You can see the slum and blight on Federal, so that's not a mystery to them. What was a mystery to these poor people was B&Bs. They didn't know they had one for a neighbor that parks the entire street solid when the rentals are there, and they throw parties, which they do because they're on vacation. And the other term which I found entertaining was they didn't know what a sober home was, but they do now because they have one directly across the canal. 24/7 noise, shouting, screaming, fighting, police calls already. They came to our community meeting to see what INCA does about stuff like that, and we wish them well. We're spending a lot of money in Boynton Beach to clean up the slum and blight. The CRA's done a pretty good job of that. You guys are voting on some stuff, and more is going to happen. But in our community, our waterfront communities, 11 of our communities, this is what's going on. We've got businesses. These aren't people renting their homes for vacation rentals. These are businesses that have purchased these homes and are running them as hotels. They park up the street. They raise hell. The noise is unbelievable, and it's week after week, all year long. I got two with insight of my house. These poor people now know what a sober home is. They literally didn't know what that was, and now they got one right across the street from their half-million-dollar home, and life is just wonderful. If we're going to spend all this time and effort on slum and blight, maybe we could spend a little more time and effort on cleaning up this insidious slum and blight process that occurs with these B&Bs, these sober homes. I know you guys are working on that at the higher level. And recently, we now have derelict vessels on the waterfront. Guy lives on the one right off the end of my dock. Lives on it. No sewer ability, no motor to move the thing. I can't wait for hurricane season because someone's going to own this thing. It's drifted into the seawall once already. They pulled it back out. Has to be towed everywhere. Boynton's got a bunch of these things. Exactly one of them is legal, has the navigation light. None of them... The rest of them can even manage to turn on a light bulb on the mast, which is a basic requirement. Guy comes and goes to the one by my house in a motorized vessel with no tags, no stickers, no nothing. Totally illegal in Florida, but that doesn't matter. Doesn't probably even live in Boynton or pay taxes. Slum and blight, three simple issues. I don't know why we can't head this stuff off, because you know where this is going. You've got waterfront communities that are being slum and blighted by these things. And we would just ask that the commission pay a little bit of attention to these issues and give us some help, because it's going downhill, folks. Thanks.
Harry, I want to say thank you, because that's... I represent you all, and I'd like to, as Acting Chief, you know, if you can get a report together and at least shoot me something, let me know what's going on. Thank you.
1711 Wood Fern Drive, Boynton Beach. You know, I hear Commissioner Romulus talk tonight on... I'm being a teacher and afraid to... And I don't blame him. When I served my country, I was called into the Marine Corps. I took an oath to defend the Constitution and defend the people of the United States, which I did. I didn't run up to Canada. I want... Country called me, I went. Arch President. Huh. Give me a break. He took the same darn oath, and he isn't doing a damn thing to protect us. Congress passed overwhelmingly sanctions on Russia. Okay? 500, and some are to 15. He's not imposing them. He is a stooge, and calls the shots. You know it, and I know it. Finally today, he finally says he thinks this... Thinks something is coming in from Russia. Use the sanctions. He's not doing it. All we hear is lies and lies and lies. And for the commissioner to say that she's afraid to go in, there are other teachers also that are out there. And what happened in Parkland is a disgrace. Then he goes there to talk to them, and then when he talks, he gives a thumbs up. All about him, everything. 14 tweets over the weekend. 14 tweets. The guy's a disaster unit. I've been up here constantly telling you and warning you that it can't happen here. It's happening here like it did in Germany. And so hopefully, Mueller is squeezing the trigger. He's going to get him. He's going to get the family, and he's going to get him. And that'll be... That'll be the greatest thing, the greatest news that I can probably bring out. Another thing that I've been harping on is climate change. You know it, and I know it. I was on a commission for Palm Beach County. We are at a point of no return. Go down to Miami. Go down to Miami. See what's happening on a daily basis. I'm glad to hear that Commissioner Casello brought up about weapons that should not be done here in the city. I hope that this passes. Maybe the city of Boynton Beach can tell the federal government what to do. I also want to compliment the fire chief. I've been one of the oldest members, 16 years on CERT. The fire chief and all the fire professionals are doing one hell of a job. I am attending. I missed the last two sessions, but I get to bring up my skills that every week, we go there. Once a year, there's a new class. And let me tell you something. Hunters Run, to their credit, Hunters Run has the largest contingent there, so that they... They are putting their mouths where the water is. And again, I can't thank my firefighters more than what I've said today. And I'm fully trained. And in summary, in summary, I'd like to say that I want to give my report card for this commission, and this is the best commission that we have had, period. And there are leaders...
Thank you.
The mayor. You're doing...
I still have to cut you off. Thank you, though.
But a great report. Straight ahead.
I do appreciate the report card.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Bernadine, and I reside at 9873 Lawrence Road, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. I recently moved, so I had to look it up. Sorry. I come here today to thank every single elected official for the work that you do every day. I know it's not easy to be up here, and I have to deal with the many issues that you have to listen to in every meetings. And I trust that you... You live in this city, and you know, if not all the issues and most of the issues that affect this community. And as a resident of this city and elected officials of this city, you care as much as we do for the city of Boynton Beach. And mayor, I also want to thank you for your presence and not just the city of Boynton Beach and the county. I've been to several meetings, and I've seen you, DRA, West Palm, so I wanted to thank you for that as well. That shows the relationship that you're not only building in the city of Boynton Beach, but also in the county. So I want to thank you for that, and thank you all.
Seeing no more...
I mean...
You're coming? All right.
My name is Jean Waters. I'm at 280 Main Boulevard, Boynton Beach. And, yeah, it's... I don't know if... Is this the agenda that I can address safety issues for the community?
Speak with whatever you like for the next 2 minutes and 42... 1 second.
Oh, okay. I was wondering... This is the old courthouse. I came through the courthouse door. This is the old police station? This is...
City Hall.
City Hall. Okay. But I entered City Hall not going through a metal detector, right?
Correct.
Now, you're going to build other buildings. Are they going to have metal detectors?
We'll definitely ask. I don't know, because we are not there yet. We're almost there.
Okay, because tonight I heard the mayor, Jerry Munio...
Yes.
From West Palm Beach. And I know that there's issues with the Second Amendment, what mayors are allowed to do to protect their citizens and guns. And she, I guess, went against Governor Scott because she has metal detectors when they enter into her rooms, right?
Into City Hall in West Palm Beach.
Right. Oh, that's City Hall?
Yes.
Okay, and this is City Hall?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe you'll think about it?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I don't want you to get arrested.
No. Well, thank you.
It'll be nice if you didn't.
Mayor, I'll just add to Ms. Jean, to Ms. Waters, as you walk away. Can you hear me? Hi. So in a couple of weeks, March 13th, I believe it is, we have a special meeting for our town square, where we'll be discussing different things about our new downtown that we're building. So if you'd like, you can attend, and you can give some input at that time as well regarding what you're hoping to see in some of these buildings as we build them.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
But if you don't attend, we heard what you said, okay?
Okay.
We heard what you said.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Seeing no more public comments, moving on to administrative. I believe we do not have any positions someone applying. So we have three advisory seats open for the Arts Commission, four available for the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, one for the Historic Resources Preservation Board, one for the Employee Pension Board, and two for the Senior Advisory Board. Next, we're going to move on to Commissioner Romulus's Item 12D under New Business for the Boynton Beach Short Film Festival hosted by South Tech.
Right, we have a representative here from South Tech. If you could just come and give a brief overview about what the film festival is, but I would make a motion to donate $300 of my community support funds to this organization and to the fine work that they're doing. I believe it's a great organization that started, and they're also going to be doing some great things as the time comes on and hopefully make this program go international soon. So it's great to just really have representation in our film and our... In the arts, and South Tech is a great entity to be doing that. So I'll give the floor to you.
Thank you. My name is Larry Richmond, and I'm here on behalf of South Tech Academy, 1300 Southwest 30th Street here in Boynton Beach. First, I want to say on behalf of the students and staff of South Tech Academy that we stand strong with our neighbors to the south at the high school where so many were tragically taken. And your comments tonight were very poignant, and I don't really need to add to that other than to say never again. I want to thank Commissioner Romulus for her generous donation and support of the festival. This is the second year that we're happening. It's the Boynton Beach Short Film Festival. It is done under the auspices of South Tech Academy. And we are a world-class film festival right here in Boynton Beach. There's nothing that brings people to a town like this more than a world-class event, and we're doing that. And Boynton Beach Short Film Festival is unlike any other film festival in America. It is the only one that is run by a high school but incorporates the community outside that high school. The students of South Tech actually work within their curriculum to learn how to put on a film festival. The graphics students do posters and tickets, and marketing students sell the tickets, and filmmakers, the filmmaking students, work to help host the... Watch the screen... Watch the films and then host the screenings at the theater. This is not done anywhere else. It's not an after-school activity. It's part of the curriculum of South Tech, and that makes it unique. And that's a hook that has been attractive to the press and to those outside of Boynton Beach. One of the exciting things about having a film festival like the Boynton Beach Short Film Festival here is that it not only brings out the residents who buy the tickets and go out and spend money in our restaurants, but it also has the potential to bring in tourism dollars. We all know the competition for entertainment dollars is just incredible right now. And you need an event that's different, something that you can't find anywhere else. And that's what this film festival is doing. But we need to get the word out. The press has been very good to us, but it takes more than that. It takes advertising. It takes the ability to bring in filmmakers and bring in celebrities who can then put the festival into the press a little bit more. I call it a precious cycle. You get celebrities come, you get the press, you get sponsorships, and the festival grows. People come to Boynton Beach, and they spend money here, and they have a good time. But in order to do that, it takes money. And, you know, what Commissioner Romulus has done is fantastic. We would love it if other members of the commission and the mayor would match her generous donation, and hopefully, you'll come out and have a good time. Commissioner Romulus was there last year, and so was the mayor. I know you guys had a good time, and hopefully, you'll come back this year. You're all invited to come watch movies and party.
Do you ever work with the... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You're wide open.
The question I was going to... With Boynton High, I know they have a group over there. Do you work in conjunction with them? Maybe putting on a, you know, co-sponsors production?
No, we... I'm John Pallardis. I'm the...
Hi, John.
How you doing? I'm the film instructor at South Tech Academy. We haven't actually partnered up with another school. The biggest outreach that we've had is to actually all of the high schools and middle schools in Palm Beach County and actually the surrounding counties for submissions for the festival. It's important to us that our students, my students, other teachers' students have their voices heard through their art, through the blood, sweat, and tears that they've poured into their films. And I can't possibly express to you the joy on their faces, poured into their films. And I can't possibly express to you the joy on their faces, on other teachers' students' faces, when they have put so much into a project like that and then have an opportunity to have it screened to the very community that hopefully they'll be giving back to in the future in some capacity. Not everybody has that opportunity and we want our students to, and other school students, to have that opportunity to have their film shown in a prime slot at a big festival like that. It's not enough to just put it on YouTube and hope that, you know, they get some likes if some people see it. To have an entire community be part of that and share that, that's all part of the process. And we hope that you see the value that that brings to the community and hopefully support us financially.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I don't know who sent me an email. Commissioner McCray, raise your hand. Who sent me an email? Somebody over there sent me an email.
It wasn't me.
Well, don't be afraid. I'm just saying...
But I would love to.
Well, I'm trying to tell you, I received an email about this festival and I'm glad that you're here tonight to explain it. Okay, last year, how many was in attendance?
We had approximately... We filled nearly 100-seat theater with each block of films that showed.
Okay. My take is I know that South Tech is... Commissioner Romulus, that's her alumni... you know, that's her school. But anyway, I'm not going to match Commissioner Romulus. I'm gonna go ahead and say, put me down for $500. I do want to support you all. Thank you for coming.
That's very generous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. And it's on both Commissioner Romulus's and Commissioner McCray's amounts. All those in favor, states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none. Congratulations. Look forward to the film festival.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And I invite everyone tonight here in attendance to participate. It's a great event. Again, last year when I was there, they showed just some amazing, just short films that were maybe five minutes long. And some of them had no words, where it was just music and it was just the film. But you were moved to tears because you understood what the film was showing you just by the art that was visually portraying in front of you. You could see the work that the young kids and the filmmakers had made in some of these movies. So it's a really tremendous show. And when it actually does happen, I invite all of you to be there, so to support these local artists that are doing great work. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, would anyone like to discuss one of those items? I'd like to discuss Item D. I don't know. Is there anything else? Sing none. Proposed Resolution Number 18-030, authorize mayor grant to sign the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy Commitment Letter. Is there some... She's out. Okay, thanks, Colin. Glad you're feeling better.
Eddie was sick.
Sorry. Colin Groff says the city manager...
So my main question is, the reason why we're... Is this different than the Paris Agreement?
It is. My understanding, and again Rebecca's the expert, but she gave me a little brief, very short lesson. This is something that her understand... The way she explained it to me, there was a couple of different groups that were looking to put cities together. There was one in the United States, one globally, put cities together. They're acting on climate change and have a climate change accord. And there's a... And what they did is they came up with a platform and a criteria that cities should do and mayors should encourage their cities to do to try to help the situation. In our case, we're already doing those things. We have a climate action plan. We've already implemented. We've done almost all of the activities that are already included in this. So if we become part of the organization, we get recognition for what we've already done. We're one of the leaders in doing it. So it really gives us good recognition of doing something way ahead of the pack, way ahead of everybody else. So that's my understanding of it. It's a global initiative of mayors from all over the world, joined together to try to meet the criteria. And it is, it came out of a couple of organizations that already exist.
All right.
Best I can do.
That's great. I'm very happy because, you know, I've gotten a lot of emails regarding signing the Paris Agreement or the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And so I'm glad we're doing this internationally to move forward with the greening of Boynton Beach. And so I'd ask the commission to... A motion for to approve.
A mo.
Second.
All those in favor, states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, did I forget? Yeah, I did forget 13A. So we'll move up to 13A, which is Proposed Resolution. Consider real estate purchase and sale agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and Brittany Blumberg for a vacant parcel at the end of Southwest 24th Avenue adjacent to I-95 for $200.
Excuse me, before we move that up, I want to make sure that we finish this consent agenda thing. I'm just saying, we did yours, but did we offer motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda?
Absolutely. Can I get that motion?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Consent agenda's been approved.
Now, we're good.
So yes, Andrew.
Good evening. Andrew Mack, Director of Development. Back in September, after the Hurricane Irma, I was out in the city. We're meeting on site, looking at some vegetation and some waste. And while I was in the neighborhood, Ms. Blumberg approached me and asked me how she could acquire the vacant adjacent lot next to her property. So after some discussions, I told her, informed her of the process. We did receive a written offer from Ms. Blumberg, which is a part of your backup. During that process, we vet the parcel to see if there's any public purpose. And at that point, we did review it and with the help of staff, there was a lot of departments, recreation, utilities, public works. They had no public purpose for this lot. So based on that, we did draw up a contract and the offer to present to you for your consideration tonight. Also have a aerial photo just so that we can kind of point out the location to everyone in the audience. It's located south of 23rd Avenue, west of Seacrest Boulevard, adjacent to I-95. You can see the parcel there in red. And there's a blow-up of the parcel. This parcel used to be an entire lot. It was bifurcated when I-95 right away was acquired. So this became an unbuildable lot. And I can open up questions. If you have any questions?
I have a question. I'm gonna go ahead and start. I'm just saying, you know, if we give her title, I'm just saying, she's selling property, that means that she's gonna be able to sell this alone. It's gonna enhance her property. It's gonna be more money.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. You said, okay. Let me ask. The next question is, what is a lot worth? I'm just saying, I know it's worth more than $200.
Currently, the county property appraiser has it assessed as $52,000. I think this was a holdover from when it was originally assessed. We did contact the assessor and they valued it. Well, it'll be reevaluated in the 2018 cycle, but based on their pencil review, they said it would be between $9,000 and $16,000.
All right. Let me ask another question if I can answer this. Are we paying taxes on this property?
No.
I don't see any reason to get rid of it. Okay, I'm good.
Are we spending any money on this property?
Yes, there are some costs incurred. We do have to maintain this lot, which is lot... mowing of the lot and then periodic de-removal as well.
So...
It's about $1,400 annually.
And how long have we been doing that?
We took title, I believe, in 1974. I don't, you know, obviously the costs weren't $1,400 through that whole time period, but those are the current costs.
So it's been costing the city... Well, you know, it's cost the city well over thousands of dollars. And we will still have to maintain this property if we do not decide to sell it. And it will continue to cost the city money. The question I have for the board is that, you know, this is not the only type of parcel that the city owns like this. Now, do we want to set a certain rate that we're willing to sell for square footage? Or what do we want to do? Because, you know, it is costing taxpayers and we're not getting any benefit from it. That's Commissioner... It was Vice Chair, then Commissioner McCray, and then everybody else.
I think that's a good recommendation because I know if we don't set a standard and we accept the current offer, it basically means we're giving away all city-owned parcels that we don't have a specific purpose for, but might have value and increase land value for the potential recipient. So I don't know what per-square-footage amount would be appropriate, but I think that, I think it would be important to set a standard, or at least tonight, set some sort of precedent that could lead to a standard devised by staff, because I think there's a number of these properties throughout the city that we're starting to look through. So it could become a fairly common occurrence that we engage in this type of deal. So we've got to have some sort of baseline.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Mayor, I'm not gonna go along with you saying it's not, it does not serve a purpose. It serves a purpose for the city of Boynton for green space, if nothing else.
Commissioner Cassell?
I would just say, I don't think we can set a standard. I think each parcel would be unique in its own right, you know, depending on location, how it's landlocked and such. So to come up with a set price or a standard on how we dispose of these, I don't think that's something we can do. Now, I agree that this would enhance this piece of property's worth. For $200, I'm not on board with the $200 value. But if something can be worked out between that, you know, what I'm seeing here in front of me, between that $9,000 and $16,000, a number that can be worked with the owner, and then I'd be, you know, open to that. But like I said earlier, I don't think we can set a standard for each parcel and say, this parcel, we're gonna sell it for X amount of dollars per foot. I think each parcel is unique.
Commissioner Romulus?
My take is to just direct staff to negotiate a number with the landowner here. She apparently is interested in the property. I believe that there is a price that can work for both parties, but I am not in favor of $200 being the price.
And we have the applicant, Brittany Blumberg. Is there anything you'd like to address with the... to the commission?
Well, there's no value to anybody but me since I'm the adjacent owner. So I've lived there for 10 years and I have watched people throw glass bottles. I have three children that I'm raising there. So basically, I just would like it. I have no intent on selling my house anytime soon. I'm born and raised in Boynton Beach, to clean it up and have it nice for my kids to play outside and such things. It has become a dumping lot, which I do not mind for our neighbors because there is a... They can't pick up trash. There's an electrical line where they can't pick up trash on a couple of our houses. There is a neighbor that moved in there that is calling constantly about it. So I would just like to, you know, clean it up and take it on for my kids. But I am in agreeance to negotiating a price.
And regarding my comment about negotiating a price, it does not necessarily have to be at appraised value, but again, it should be something that's fair to both parties. Thank you.
But if I am correct, if we are selling it for less than the fair market value, we have to get four fifths instead of three fifths? Okay. And so the appraised value is not necessarily the four market value, fair market value? And so Jim, how do we determine the fair market value of the property? Does the city, you need to do an appraisal or something?
We could do an appraisal. That's one way to establish it. Other research through real estate personnel could do that as well.
And how much would that cost roughly?
Oh, I don't know. I'd have to check.
Okay.
On the appraisal side of it.
Could the applicant have an appraisal done?
And that way, we know what is fair market to... whether we need three fifths or four fifths?
Yes, that could happen.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you want, get it appraised, then we'll come back and we can sit down and we can talk.
At the fair market value.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for your interest, Ms. Blumberg.
Thank you.
Now, where are we? So we're moving on to Item 7A, bids and purchases over $100,000. Authorize the use of five approved vendors for an annual expenditure not to exceed $250,000 for wastewater pump placements for over 160 wastewater lift stations in the utility service area. Have a motion to approve.
A mo. Second.
Any discussion? Sing none. All those in favor, states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Eric?
Yes.
Excuse me, in regards to Number 8, I know we have nothing listed. And I'm just saying, years ago, we used to have things that appeared on this community status, but it was called code compliance, legal settlements, and they have on here none all the time. Do we ever get anything that needs to be on here, Lori?
Yeah, when we have settlements, when we bring cases before you that the commission ultimately settles, we'll put it under this section.
Okay, let me ask you another...
We just haven't in a while.
I know we haven't had it in a while. That's my concern. I'm just saying, are they being settled by the magistrate or...
No, that's... There's a... Lawsuits that say are brought before the city, we put them under that section, don't we?
Would you... You could take it off of that section and we could add it as needed to legal from time to time.
Yeah, I'm just saying, why don't we do that instead of...
Take two words of meeting until we bring something forward.
All right.
All right.
That's just my take.
Bring consensus with that? Yep. Sounds good. All right. Moving forward to Item 9A, Proposed Ordinance Number 17-021, Second Reading. Approve Town Square Future Land Use MAP Amendment from Public and Private Government Institutional and High Density Residential to Mixed Use Medium City Initiated.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, meaning ordinance 8938 by meaning the future land use settlement of the Comprehensive Plan for Property Commonly Known as Town Square and Described here and owned by the city of Boynton Beach, changing the land use designation from public and private governmental institutional and high-density residential to mixed-use medium, provided for conflict severability in an effective date.
Good evening. Amanda Basili. I'm a senior planner and urban signer with the Development Department. If it is okay with the commission, I will be reviewing Item 9A and B, both concerning Town Square. So the location of Town Square, as most of you know, is this parcel and the three blocks south of this parcel. So we go from Boynton Beach Boulevard to Southeast 2nd Avenue and we are from Seacrest to 1st Street. Right now, it includes seven city-owned parcels and it is approximately 15 acres in size. There are... It currently houses the City Hall, the old high school, the Schoolhouse Museum, the Civic Center, Kingdom Playground, the library, and the Senior Center. These parcels are within the CRA. They're also within the city's Downtown TOD. And in regards to the CRA redevelopment plan, it is split between two districts. The northern block is within the Boynton Beach Boulevard District and the three southern blocks are within the Cultural District. Currently, these parcels have the land use of public, private, government, institutional. And they are proposed to go to mixed-use medium with a maximum density of 50 dwelling units per acre plus the TOD bonus of 25%. The existing zoning is a mix of public usage, recreation, and high-density residential. And the proposal is to go to mixed-use three, which would have the density of 50 units per acre plus the 25% increase. The first reading of these items was in August 2017. Since then, the state review of the amendment was completed and the regulatory framework that was required to approve these requests has been done. The master plan components, which is the start of Item 9B, includes five different reviews. It includes intensity and density, vehicular access, building massing and heights, landscape and open space, and master plan figuring. So for the uses of the master plan, these are the public uses. It includes the Schoolhouse Museum at its existing size, the renovated historic high school, a brand-new city hall and library, which is approximately 110,000 square feet, which opens up into an open space slash amphitheater area of about 40,000 square feet. There are two additional open space areas, the playground, which is 7,000 square feet, and an open space along Seacrest, which is approximately 19,000 square feet. There are also 705 dwelling units proposed, spread over the entire project in three different buildings. The first building located on... Oh, I thought that was a pointer. Okay. So the first building located on Boynton Beach, which is to your far left, holds 225 units and also some commercial space along Boynton Beach Boulevard. Thank you. That would be that building right there. The second commercial... The second residential building holds 250 units and that lines Ocean Avenue and 1st Street. It also has some commercial space along Ocean Avenue. The third residential building lines 2nd Avenue and has 280 units and it is only residential. There are also two public garages, one at the north end and one at the southern end. There is a hotel and commercial space proposed at the corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Seacrest. So the next section would be the building massing... So the next section would be the building massing and height. It's important to note that these are overall maximums. Each building that you see will have to come back through site plan approval and will be reviewed against all of the applicable development standards. Some of them that you should note would be the Boynton Beach Boulevard, height restrictions of 45 feet on the street, and the building setback of 10 feet. And on Ocean Avenue, we have a 35-foot heights, a 35-foot height maximum on the street with a 30-foot building setback. The maximum height in the proposed zoning district is 75 feet. There is also a workforce housing bonus of 24 feet. For building heights, it generally goes from the most intense on Boynton Beach, lessening down in intensity as you get to the residential developments to the south. So 99 feet is the tallest building on Boynton Beach Boulevard. The residential building in the center is 80 feet. The southern building, it will be limited to 50 feet. City Hall is currently proposed at 75, and the hotel is also currently proposed at 75 For the phasing of the master plan, it is currently divided up into three different phases. The first phase includes all of the civic uses, including the city hall, all of the public open spaces, and one of the garages, which would be the one located to the south. Phase two would be the residential building to the south, and phase three would include the two residential buildings to the northern end and the hotel. Staff is currently recommending approval of all three items, the master plan, the future land use, and the rezoning, and we are here to take any questions.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Just to assuage potential concerns, the master plan is not the site plan, and therefore everything that you just described could theoretically be changed through the upcoming process or could be altered.
Yeah, the point of the master plan is to give an overall view of intensity, density, and maximums or minimums. So the heights that you see are maximums, and the square footages for open spaces would be minimums. But every building would be seen again by the board through site plan approval.
All right. Anything? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the audience?
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I know it's in the backup, and it was a lot of discussion during PND, but Kids Kingdom, we set the minimum at 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. We wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, and, and you knew that that's something that had been brought forward and one of the conditions placed on this when we looked at it. Second of all, we also wanted more handicap spots. There are, this is South Florida, lots of elderly people. We just don't feel there's anywhere close to the amount of handicap spots that there should be. And I want to also point out to you, in case you weren't aware, if you could go back to the one that shows the heights. I'll just talk. Building C, the one here in the middle, yeah, there you go, residential, commercial, 80 feet. I hope everyone's aware that across the street from that is a single-story apartment buildings and houses. So, you know, make sure you're not forgetting the compatibility issue when you are doing something, because while it does list the heights for Boynton Beach Boulevard and Ocean Avenue, the 45 feet and 35 feet with the setbacks, there's nothing specifically mentioned about the northeast First Street, and those are one-story houses and apartments. And please consider compatibility. So those are just the things I wanted to point out, because I wasn't sure if you had noticed them when you were reading the backup. Thank you.
Question on this plan. The library is going to be, a new library? No, absolutely not. I was on the library board. We worked our rear ends off, and this, this is a fairly new library, and that's a disgrace. That's a disgrace, and we'll put people out with no place to go yet. No, this is a no-no. We spent a lot of money on, on that library, and I may be, that's a no-no. And I think that you ought to reconsider it. We spent, it's a fairly decent new building, and I, it's just, I was on the library board and one of the people that helped get this done, and we had a lot of trouble getting this done. You gotta reconsider it to spend and waste all that money. That's a no-no. Absolutely not. And I, and I'm going to criticize this commission if they, if they do that. There's nothing I can do. You got the votes, but I think this is a no-no, and I think all the people up there, raise some hell. We spent a lot of money and good time, good money, hard-earned money. And I can tell you now, I work with Bob Enzler on that too, and, and I, I think he would be against it, I'm pretty sure. And at least I'm glad to see some of his fruition coming true that he worked hard. But to get rid of this library? Hell, no.
Vice Chair.
Just, Vice Mayor, sorry. Just, just to give context, just to give context to the proposal to tear down the library, one, there's water intrusion, so there's mitigation costs related to fixing the current library. Two, the opportunity cost to sacrifice land value by having to place the city hall on a different part of Town Square would cost us millions. So the, the actual cost of tearing down the building, I know it sounds counterintuitive because it's a relatively new building, but the cost of fixing that building, locating city hall on a different piece of the project would actually cost more than tearing it down and building up a new one.
Any further?
Yes, one more thing to mention to Ms. Oyer's comments, the handicap parking spots, that will be something that we discuss more when we get into the site plan process, correct?
Yeah, that will be discussed at site plan, but we do, however, have it as a comment on the master plan. So there are three different approvals. The last one is a development order for the master plan. The comments from the PND board, the two that she mentioned, are conditions of approval of that item.
Yes, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Mr. Suss, I'm going to agree with you. I'm just saying, because I was sitting up here when we went through the library thing, and I asked Mr. Livergood when we was adding on, was that any reason we did not tear the thing down then? He said that was no reason not to do that, and I'm going to assure you, my vote is, I am not in favor of tearing down the library. My vote is, I'm not even in favor of this Town Square project, because I don't know where we're going to get the money from to do this, and I don't want to tax the citizens when I'm dead and gone, they're still trying to pay on this. I'm not in favor of Town Square.
All right. Excuse me. All right. What I want to say is that for the handicap, is that a condition of approval that we need to put a motion in?
The board did include that, so it is already in the conditions of approval for item B.
And so the, the question that I have is, is that at any time, we can have more handicap spots, but you're saying this is the minimum amount that we can have?
Correct. The minimum, again, this doesn't really show any parking spaces on it yet. There's no parking spaces actually shown or delineated. There was some conversation that we have recorded from the Planning and Development Board meeting, but, Mr. Katz.
Maybe I could help, yes. Just, whoa, man, I don't know what that is. Just so you know, this is a city project, so it really is the city, which is you representing the city's decision on how many spaces and all of that. So those conditions are conditions that you can put and tell staff, that's what you want, and you tell us what you want, and that's what we put into the project. So it's a little bit different than a private development, so.
Trying to help clarify. David Katz, 67, Midwood Lane, Chair of the PND Board. We understand that this, we were going to get what we'd call a second bite at the Apple and site plan, but we encouraged, as far as the handicap, that it would be on the outside of the city hall instead of inside the garage, because, so that would be much further away. So that was, that was the genesis of it. Yeah, it's not, we really couldn't attach a condition of approval at this time. But we put it out in the universe that that's something that, as a board, we'd like to see. Okay? Thank you.
All right. So, do we have a motion?
Go move.
Yeah. All right. It's been motioned. Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify again, it's three different actions that the board has to take.
We've got one item right now. It's ordinance 17021.
Thank you. That's been motioned and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Nay.
The vote is four to one.
Ordinance 17022, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Town Square from public usage, recreation, and multifamily to mixed-use three, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Go move. Second.
Any further discussion? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Casello? Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Nay.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
The vote is four to one.
All right. And the next item is approved the Town Square master plan. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Moving on to item C, approved Boynton Beach Gateway Police Station Community Design Appeal. And do we want to do these two items together of C and D?
Yep.
Jim, can we do that?
You could present them together, or staff can present them together. Separate motion on each one when we're done.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, if you don't mind, staff would like that. As noted, the requests are for major site plan modification and a community design plan appeal. The, the site is located at the southeast corner of Gateway Boulevard and High Ridge Road. The proposal is for a two-story, 5,300, 800 square-foot building on 4.92 acres. The site is immediately north of fire station number five there. When that property was designed, it was designed in mind for a, another city building to be located at the north end of it, potentially the police department, and that's what we see here today. The design appeal associated with this request, let me move a slide here, is associated with the overhead bay doors that would be facing High Ridge Road. High Ridge Road is down here, the bottom of the slide. The overhead bay doors would be located here on the building, here on the building, and on the separate building at the back here. That is approximately 200 feet distance from High Ridge Road. This landscape plan might give you a little bit better idea of the amount of landscaping. Again, these doors, the closest doors would be back here, approximately 200 feet away with 25-foot wide landscaping. A six-foot tall wall would be placed in here, and then you would have additional landscaping within the parking lot between those doors and the, and the road itself. Similar appeals have been granted in the area, including the, again, fire station number five, which has its overhead bay doors located right here, approximately half the distance away from High Ridge is those being proposed. The, the building has a contemporary architectural design, mimics in a good, good fashion the fire station, located immediately to the south of it. And let's see, I'm going to try and, the overhead bay doors, as you would see them, this, again, this bottom view is facing High Ridge Road. You can see two of the overhead bay doors there and another one back here. The project shares access with the police department, or with the fire department right here. They have a joint access and a joint field of parking between the proposed police station and the existing fire station. There's also parking to the east of the proposed police station and also to the west in a courtyard type of setting at the police station. Staff in the Planning and Development Board do recommend approval of it. The Planning and Development Board also added condition of approval that they would like to see three additional handicap parking spaces associated with the site plan. The handicap parking spaces are right in this area currently, and that's where they suggested adding three more. The engineer from the design team is also here. If you have any specific questions of the engineering team, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
What is the purpose of the overhead bay doors?
The overhead bay doors at the, let me change slides here and see if I can show you better on this slide. This is, there we go. This building back here is evidence bay for vehicles that they may have confiscated or are part of an evidence of an ongoing case, and they would store them in there. This area here, the small little area here is the Sally Port, where they bring in somebody that they've arrested. They want to put them in a secure area. They pull the car in there, pull the doors down behind and in front of it, and that way, when they transfer the, the, perp, for lack of a better term, they're in a secured situation. And the other, I just changed the batteries in this. There we go. The overhead bay doors there are also for evidence.
My next question is, is, I guess it's for the acting chief. I'm just saying, once we proceed with this, will we get rid of evidence storage areas that we have located all throughout the city? Will this eliminate them, or will we have to hang on to them? And if so, how many are we hanging on to?
Good evening. Acting Chief, please, Kelly Harris. Yes, this would actually allow us to get rid of all the different evidence locations that we have throughout the city.
Summed it up, but how many do we have? How many will be getting rid of?
Well, we have the one at the police station right now, and where, that's where we have all of our evidence currently right now.
But we have another one. We had one, I thought we had one.
We have one up in Renaissance Commons, and that's actually just for storage. That's not actually for evidence.
And station two is not evidence, but it's utilized by PD for additional space.
I'm getting somewhere. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Commissioner Casello.
Just a quick question. So the discussion was on overhead doors, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, let me get this right. So we're taking our brick-and-mortar police station, and we're putting it in the industrial development zoning district, correct?
It is in a planned industrial development.
So we're taking the police station out of the downtown area, putting it in industrial zoning district, and we're, we're contemplating what kind of overhead doors we can use in the industrial district? Is that, because I'm getting confused.
Okay. I'll see if I can, can walk you through that. Certain roads within the city have requirements for the facade treatments, and they do not allow overhead bay doors to face those roads unless it goes through a design appeal and there's some mitigation in place. High Ridge Road just happens to be one of those roads on which overhead bay doors should not face High Ridge Road. As I mentioned, fire station number five has gone through that process and gotten approved. Down south of Carmax, another property was approved with those overhead bay doors facing High Ridge.
So it's just formality, really?
It is a formality. And, and again, the mitigation, that's why I mentioned, mentioned the mitigation earlier is how they've addressed that.
So it's also floor and decor? I think they have.
Yeah, floor and decor is one of the examples. That's the one south of Carmax, where at the time, it was determined that more traffic actually drives up and down I-95, obviously, that would see those overhead bay doors, so they chose to put them on the High Ridge side rather than the I-95 side.
So this isn't the first bay door on High Ridge Road facing it?
No, this would be the fourth appeal.
The fourth appeal with multiple doors in each appeal?
That's correct.
Okay.
Would these match the same as the Publix Food Warehouse that's up there too? These doors, that'd be like?
I'm sorry, I would.
The overhead doors that Publix uses for their warehouse, would these be the same?
Yes, they'd be very much the same.
Okay.
Second.
I do have a question, discussion.
Yeah.
Just for our Chair of PND, why were we adding the extra three parking spots? Just for our Chair of P and Z, why were we adding the extra three parking spots, four handicap parking spots in the police department or the police station?
At 67 Midwood Lane, Chair of the P and D Board. The reason is because you're going to have a lot of people coming to visit the PD. There's a lot of parking there, and it's always been our feeling that just because the ADA rules and the statutes that govern the amount of spaces, it's really not enough. Boynton Beach has a senior population. There's a lot of what I call walking wounded, and you just need to have more handicap spots in the city, and that's why.
Do you expect a lot of foot traffic at this police station?
I would imagine just as much as at this one, if not more.
More?
I can't predict that. I'm just saying that I believe, and the board believes, that there needs to be more handicap spots in the city. I mean, if you go to Walmart or anyplace, they're all taken up.
More handicap spots because you think there'd be more traffic, vehicular traffic versus foot traffic?
I think because there's not enough handicap spots, period.
And how many are we talking about? Is this part of the site plan approval? So, how many handicap spots are there, and how many are proposed with the comments?
They did meet the minimum code requirement with the amount of handicap parking.
So, what is?
The board did request the additional three.
So, what is the minimum? You know, if the minimum is 10, then we're asking for 13. It's different than if the minimum's three and we're asking for six.
And again, this was at a point in the approval process where they didn't have to start redoing site plans.
So, maybe you might know the answer to this. Was there a number of parking spots that you felt that we needed, or you just proposed three? Where did the number three come from? That's what I'm asking.
Because we didn't want to be greedy about it. We wanted to be able to get them.
The code required for three additional, obviously, would make it seven.
Out of a total of how many parking spots?
All right, I'm going to speak as the applicant. He's planning. I'm going to be the applicant.
Okay.
So, if that's okay. Sorry. This one's hard because, in reality, you can tell us whatever many spaces you want, and that's what we'll put in. Four is the minimum based on the standard for about 120 spaces. Putting three more in is if you choose to put three more in, we can put three more in. It really is the choice of the city, how many handicap spaces to put in. So, we're really here for your direction. If, I mean, we were okay with, we didn't argue with planning zoning. They want three more, and that's the public speaking, want three more, we can put three more in. If you want only two more, we can put two more in. It's really up to you to tell us if you want us to meet just the minimum, or you want extras.
And let's qualify that that reduces the existing 100 spots down by?
It does reduce because it will take up other spots.
1.4 spots.
Right. So, every handicap space you put in, you lose 1.4 other spaces.
Commissioner Romulus?
For the fire station, won't the parking lots be right next to each other or directly across each other?
Yes, they're joint use, they're joint, it's a joint, the parking lot between the two buildings will be a joint-use public-access parking lot.
So, now if you add the fire station parking lot, how many parking spots are we talking about?
Oh, now you're, now you're.
Again, I don't need the necessarily the details, but if you give me a broad number and how many handicap parking spots they have.
While they're looking, while they're looking, I don't know what the problem is. Handicap spots is like talking about mom and apple pie.
Okay. So, I do have the numbers. There's 293 total between the fire station and the police station, both together. Of that, there's four for PD and five for fire, so that's nine total overall parking spaces. So, you'd have 12 if you added three more for 293 spaces.
Thank you for clarifying that. Now that you've put it in perspective, I am in favor of adding those three parking spots, those three handicap parking spots.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Yes.
The only question that I have, I'm for this fire station and the police station. For the police station, hell, it's been long overdue, so there's no problem. The only trepidation I have is while the building is going on with the interstate and the main drag of Gateway, I'm a little concerned about while the building is going on, about the access for the fire department for emergencies, that's what I have a consent and egress for the fire department to get first run to get the hell out there, and that's what I have trepidations about. 95 traffic, Gateway traffic, east and west, north and south on a, and so my first concern is for the fire department, with the building taken into consideration, how's that going to be handled in an emergency with the building and these builders that are going to do good, whatever, they're going to get in the way. So, what we, how do you, can you address that, please?
I can address it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a great comment, and that is something we're concerned about. We've designed this so we'll have a temporary construction entrance for this site, so it will not interfere with the main entrance to the fire. And remember, the fire apparatuses dispatch south of the fire station building. Their garage is in the south, so that'll be another 100 feet south of this construction. So, we are planning the project to make sure that that is open all the time without any disruption to service.
Another problem, when you come off of Gateway, north, south, or whatever, Gateway to enter onto High Ridge Road making a left turn, there are a lot of U-turns, a lot of U-turns that people do, not going into the fire station, and U-turns, and I see a problem, I see a problem with traffic. I really do see a problem. Gateway, north and south, especially during business hours, in the morning and at night. I think this, further into looking at this problem, it is a problem, and I'm going to tell you, you're going to have a hell of a problem with traffic. Business morning, going home, I'm telling you.
Gone Scovron, 350 North Federal Highway, apartment 1405. I'm kind of going to piggyback and excuse me if I've missed some of the, now, the police station is moving from where it is now. That's the new location. Is it also the fire station here, fire station one, or it's just going to be an additional one?
So, the fire station one is looking at different locations in the area here to relocate. One of the places is where the current parking lot is. Across from the fire station is where it could go.
Okay. Well, then, for the police station, so where I live, there is a lot going on. We have drug addiction, we have prostitution, we have homeless people. So, now you want to put it the furthest away from where we are, where, excuse me, the action is happening. So, when there is a crime, they've got to try and beat the traffic like that gentleman said, the rush hour, trying to, just a normal person trying to go from Gateway across. That is, to me, a bad idea. I mean, it's probably gone too far, and it probably, and I understand you need space, but.
Commissioner McCray, yes?
Thank you. Location is not going to deter crime, I'm just saying, with the police station there. When we bought that property, I don't know if you was here in the city of Boynton, but we promised the citizens that was going to be the safety complex for the city, and nobody had rights or griefs then, and I'm just saying, you know, crimes is what's going on now. We just had a crime here, and I cannot speak about it, but I'm kind of a little perturbed sitting up here, you know, what happened to one of our facilities, and I'm just saying crime is prevalent, and I'm just saying moving the station is not going to get rid of the problem that you're talking about. Police, wait, excuse me, police, they do not work inside the station, they work outside. Their cars will be there. I'm just saying, you know, that's my whole take, and I'm just saying, we're only giving the citizens what we voted for years ago, that that was going to be a safety complex, and it's still within district, too, within the city of Boynton.
That's correct, but I have the right to make my comments this evening.
You did.
Thank you.
Like I made mine.
And my concern is not that you can put crime anywhere, of course. My concern is, if it's that far away, are we going to have the same amount of police officers in the area that currently there is some crime?
Yes.
Thank you.
This Commissioner happens to agree with you. You sure do. And, you know, I see no, you know, Mr. McCray, Commissioner McCray, I respectfully disagree with you. I think a brick-and-mortar police headquarters set into the city, into the heart of the city goes a long way in curbing crime and helping that. You know, to stick our police headquarters in industrial development zoning district, think about this. And what Herb said about traffic up there, I travel Gateway and High Ridge every day, and in the morning and the evenings, it's a nightmare. It is a traffic nightmare. That's just a fact, whatever it is. And I understand that this land was bought years ago for this purpose, for a safety complex, and I understand that. It was probably a great idea back then, but, boy, times have changed, as we all know. So, I can't, I'm not going to be in favor of this only because of the location. I'm all in favor of a new police station, but I think this was given, this was the easy way out on this. We took the easy way out. We own this land. This was earmarked years ago, and the blinders were on, and this station was going to go there no matter what. So, I'm not going to be in favor of it for those reasons stated.
Commissioner Romulus and Vice Mayor.
For clarification's sake, Chief, Acting Chief, if you could just make your way down here as I speak. We have said it, and we've said it multiple times, this was a primary concern of mine when we considered initially this proposal to move the fire station to Gateway regarding having our police headquarters be at that location rather than being in downtown. But the concerns have been basically cleared up for me, and I would like for Acting Chief to, again, clarify to the public, that way it can be clearly stated what that means in terms of police presence around our city, being that we'll have our headquarters in the western half of the city.
Sure. Actually, Commissioner Mac McCray started on it, which I can elaborate on. Our officers do not deploy from the station. Our officers deploy from the field. So, basically, the only time that they're in the station is when they come and they go to a roll call. Other than that, they are in their vehicles and they're out, and they're located all throughout the city. So, they do not respond to calls from services specifically from a brick-and-mortar location such as the police department headquarters.
So, again, to clarify and to make it very clear to the public, response times should not in any way extend or lag because of the relocation of our headquarters, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I, we've had the same discussion probably about a dozen times in the past year. I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Casello that I would have preferred it to be on the east side, but at no point during any of those dozen discussions has there been a majority vote in favor of that. So, while I don't agree with the location, as a personal preference, I, you know, I can count the three, or I can not count the three, and at no point during any of this have we gotten the three. So, you know, I support putting it there. It's going to move the project, town square along. It's going to give us a definitive site, and there's just no, there's no third vote for an alternative location on the east side. It's, you know, that's just where we're at.
Chief, just one quick question before you leave. Would you agree or disagree that having a police headquarters in the downtown area, vibrant police headquarters with people going in and out, doing their business, the changing of shifts, officers coming to work, leaving for work, would make that area a little bit more secure? Would you have, would that have any effect? No, you don't think so?
I don't believe that would have any effect on it.
No? Not at all?
No, sir.
Really?
Yes, sir.
And so, the presence of police coming and going to work, people going in and out of the police headquarters, that wouldn't have any effect on the surrounding area? Wow.
Remember where it currently is, so.
Yes, I understand that. Yeah, I absolutely understand that. But like I said, the officers, they actually deploy from the field. They're not, they do not respond specifically from this location. It's the only time that they're here is when they're actually doing roll call.
Any further, do I have a?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And this is for item C. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes forty-one. Second item, approve Boynton Beach Gateway Station, major site plan modification. May I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Moving on to proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero zero one. Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, meaning ordinance O two, O one, three to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as MLK South from mixed-use low intensity to district to mixed-use two dense district, MU two, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date.
Ana Mate, Senior Planner. This is the city initiative resoning of the first of the two items that you have on the agenda, referred to as house cleaning. There is a reference for house cleaning because these are the items that have been reclassified last year in July as part of this big comprehensive plan amendment to implement the CRA plan. And now they have the quote-unquote new future land use classifications. However, they have zoning designation that no longer exists. They have been, they have been eliminated from the code in, as the new, the amendment to the code were approved in September of 2017, and now we need to change the zoning to finalize the implementation of the CRA plan for those particular properties. The first of them, we refer to as MLK South. This includes 17 parcels, 10 of which are owned by the CRA, and the remaining seven are privately owned, five of them by single entity. 13 of the parcel are at this moment vacant. So, as a result of this last classification, which I just mentioned, the property has a mixed-use medium future land use. That land use has a maximum of 50 dwelling units per acre density and has two zoning districts corresponding to it. One has 40 units per acre maximum and 150. So, the area current zoning, MUL two, has a maximum density of 30 units per acre. This has been phased out, and since that new zoning structure doesn't have any zoning designation that has the same 30 units per acre, we then propose that you resone it to the MU two, which has 40 units per acre, to be consistent still with CRA plan and be more consistent with the surrounding properties and the future and the recommendation of the CRA for the surrounding properties. That is all for this particular item. If you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Question from the audience? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
Kent?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello? The vote is five to zero.
The second property is North Federal Highway. We call it Nilam Business Center. This was the last project that was approved of this property. The site plan hence has expired, and the site has been vacant for quite a while. Now, this particular property has been reclassified to mixed-use low last year, and the only zoning district that mixed-use low has is MU one. That's a 20 dwelling units per acre. The existing zoning district has 40 units per acre. So, we are downzoning it and anticipating your question. We have reviewed, the site is relatively small. It would never, considering that any project has to be parked and has to meet other sites' regulations, it will not, it could not accommodate 40 units per acre, and the same goes with FAR. The last project that was approved on it has a FAR 0.4. The maximum FAR of that new zoning district is one. So, there's, there are no concern that staff has about downzoning of this property. However, you know, that's what it is. So, if you have any other questions, again, we do recommend MU one as a zoning district, as the only one zoning district that that particular land use classification has.
Who's the property owner?
A company whose name now escapes me. I think out of Atlanta, I think, let me see if I, let me see if I, I can find out for you right now. It's, it's called...
It's called, uh...
A A L S.
L S C.
Yep. Double, double A. Limited liability company.
L S C.
Okay. Do you have anybody, list of any directors or something that we want to make sure that where you have no relations or any sort of business transactions with these people? They, is this, and this is just something that we're doing because it's something we have to?
Yes.
Okay.
And they've been notified, we notified them thirty days prior to planning, I mean, the PND hearing. We notified them. We haven't heard from anybody in response to the city's first official letter.
All right.
We'll provide more ownership information in the backup for second reading.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I need to read the ordinance. It's eighteen oh oh two, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance O two oh one three to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Nilam, formerly known as Schnarr's Business Center, from mixed-use low district to mixed-use one district, providing for conflict severability in an effective date.
Now, we'll take Vice Mayor's motion. Do I have a second? May I have a roll call, please?
Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
And Mayor Grant?
Yes.
The vote is five to zero.
Next, we have the City Manager's Report.
We wanted to ask the Commission, and, we want to have a special meeting on March thirteenth, which is before your CRA meeting, a special meeting of the City Commission and the CRA to hopefully be bringing several legal documents forward to the Commission to move forward into phase two on Town Square. So, we're still working on the documents, I will say that. I wanted to get something on an agenda to get it out publicly in the event we do meet that date and we can bring this, bring this information forward to you. So, we're looking at four o'clock over in the library program room. We need a couple hours to potentially take you through about eight or ten documents to, to get moving into phase two.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
Um, not really. I just, I have already spoken to each of you individually, but it's, it's more so on the agenda for public notice.
Next is the discussion for Habitat for Humanity's proposal regarding the development of the portion of the Galaxy Scrub area for the construction of twenty-two new homes.
In, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, in the interest of time and sparing us all, the, the school board has, or at least staff representing the school board, has rejected any interest in removing the deed restriction to allow for development. I know my personal position at this point is that there's plenty of other land that Habitat could work with in the City of Boynton Beach, so I won't be in favor of this. So, if, if it could expedite this process, I feel like that, saying that first might help.
So, the discussion is, is that it's, the deed restrictions has not been removed, yes?
Um, in late this afternoon, I had a conversation with Mr. Fangler from Habitat, and I shared with him even a week ago, as far as our response by the school district, that they were not interested, staff was not interested in moving forward and trying to remove the deed restriction. I shared that information with him, and that's why he's not here tonight. He just said to go ahead and, they're just going to withdraw that request for that development project.
All right.
I know that if former Commissioner Fitzpatrick wants to speak on it, I would be open to that.
I just want to say something real quick first as well. You know, the fact of the matter is, is that we've had this property for a while, and we have not done anything with it. I've spoken with Rebecca Harvey, our Sustainability Coordinator, and proposing her the idea of her being a liaison to the Boynton Beach's Sustainability and Resiliency Advisory Board. Because one of the things is, is that this is green space, open space, that is designated to be a park, and we need help from, I think, the city, because, I'm sorry, the residents to help maintain this property and along with our other scrub areas, to provide more information, to look to see about getting grants so that we can develop this. Because, as you may know, we really don't have the money as a city. And so, it's almost working with the different nonprofit organizations that this advisory board would do. And so, I just want to see if I can get your guys' input or maybe have a discussion later about what we can do to help with the greening of this Boynton Beach.
I would be in favor of having a discussion regarding this board. This is a board that I've heard several members of the public express interest in, so I think it's something that we can possibly discuss and see if there's consensus to create that board and allow for input from the community for something of this nature. Something else that I possibly would like to see happen at that location would be perhaps to create a, some type of, of solar park or something that would allow for energy being created, but also to use it and maintain open space there so we can continue just letting that be a, an area that not only is green and allows for sustainability, but also provides energy and provides sustainability to the surrounding community. So, maybe that's something that we can, again, further discuss if, if that is the will of the board.
Former Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Mike Fitzpatrick, one seventy-five Southwest Second Street. Since there isn't much of a discussion on, on whether or not you're going to give it to Habitat for Humanity, so I can cut down my comments by two-thirds. So, but what it is, is there's a lot of confusion about what is the purpose of this land? Why did the city acquire it? And for instance, in the backup from December fifth, the backup says, discussed potential land, to sell certain lands owned by the city, tenant was to divest lands which are currently a maintenance burden and have no planned future development plans. And then later on, it says, this land is considered by some to be valuable open scrub land that should be preserved. I was going to go list everybody that's on board that this should be a nature preserve or has said so, but I'll leave that. I gave you each one of these a packet today. My wife compiled most of it, but she doesn't like speaking public, so I'm doing the talking. But I've been in contact with the Sierra Club. As a Sierra Club member, I've talked to Erica Woodfield on the school board, and another Sierra Club member, Kay Gates, talked to Karen Brill. And Erica gave me the names of some other people to contact on, on school administration. And just coincidentally, today about noon, I had not time to put it in this, but I received the inter-local agreement between the City of Boynton Beach and the school board for the conveyance, development, and mutual use of the preservation property. Now, in your backup today, it references this document. It says, as a material inducement, a grantor to convey the property to grantee, and as a part of consideration for this conveyance, grantor hereby impose a restricted covenant of the property. My question is, why did staff pick out this one paragraph in ten pages? So, what's interesting about it is on the first page, I'll just read you this bottom third, whereas the school board owns certain real property described on Exhibit A, here attached, here to incorporate herein by reference adjacent to the future city replacement park preservation property. And whereas the school board is willing to convey the preservation property to the city, subject to certain use restrictions and with reversionary rights on the preservation property. Whereas the city is willing to accept title, subject to certain use restrictions and a reversionary right on a preservation property. And whereas the city is willing to construct improvements on a preservation property and be responsible for any fees, permits, use, and maintenance costs and adequate security of the preservation property. Now, this is an interesting clause. The city shall communicate any plans with the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. It's a nature preserve. Whereas the party's mission is to utilize the preservation property and improvements to further environmental education, comma, environmental stewardship, comma, environmental research, and environmental curricula serving all ages and educational levels. So, it's pretty much spelled out what this property, the city sought this property and accepted it under those conditions. Also, in Section Six, it says mutual use of preservation property. The school board shall have the exclusive right to use a preservation property during normal school hours, inclusive of normal after-school operational hours, school hours. The city shall have the use of the preservation property during weekends and school hours, student school holidays, and weekends, and all other times that school is closed. The city shall be responsible for the perpetual maintenance of the preservation property at its sole cost and expense. So, it's pretty much spelled out what this property was supposed to be for. And technically, the city's probably in, out of compliance, and if the school board wanted it back, they could take it. I don't think they want it because they were pretty poor stewards too. But the point is, there's already pretty much outline of a plan. It goes on to say, the school principal and the director of the, of the recreation parks should get together and make a plan. So, that's what I think the city should do. I have copies, since staff didn't provide you with it.
Barbara Reedy, three two nine Southwest Thirteenth Avenue. I'll be even briefer than Mike. I just wanted to remind everybody that we're very proud of our title as a tree city, and we do have in our comprehensive plan, the fact that we're supposed to have two and a half acres of green per one thousand people. And since we're planning on adding five to seven thousand people in our downtown, seems like we need to be finding green space from someplace. So, I'm greatly relieved that y'all have decided to adhere to the deed restriction and keep it a green space. The ball was dropped somewhere along the line. When, when the city makes a long-term commitment, such as they did in, in this grant proposal, I read the grant proposal, it was wonderfully written, and it pointed out many important points about our city. When we make a long-term commitment like that, there needs to be some kind of institutional continuity and memory of our long-term commitments. I don't know what kind of a system we need to do that, but we need to, when we promise to do something, such as we did when we made that grant application, we really need to follow through with our promises. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hello?
Just comment, former Commissioner Fitzpatrick, I admire your, your passion on these green spaces and waterways and blueways. Sat up here with you for a couple of years, and I think one of the biggest mistakes the city ever made was that Lake Ida project that we could have got for, for pennies, and it didn't go through. So, I always admired your mic, and thank you.
So, moving on to item eleven A, proposed resolution number eighteen dash zero three three, approve the pilot agreement for automatic license plate recognition system solutions services with American Traffic Solutions and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Just for point of clarification, the city manager might want to just...
Could I jump in instead?
Oh, sure.
Thanks. All right, well...
You're getting paid.
We already have an agreement with ATS. What was missing from that agreement was a side agreement with the software provider that provides the software that generates the automatic license plate reader program. So, this is circling back to the same agreement with ATS, but now adding on that component part.
And everything stays the same?
Everything else stays the same.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Saying none with one absent. Next, we're moving on to thirteen B.
I got two new businesses.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, new business.
There's three.
So, Commissioner, Commissioner Casello, would you like to begin with the resolution for gun?
Yeah. Before you, you have two copies of two, two resolutions, one's for Wilton Manners, the other one's for the City of Sunshine, Florida.
Right.
Sunshine, Florida, excuse me, thank you. I had asked the city attorney to look into this, us forming a resolution for here for Boynton Beach, and he chose these two as, to use as our template. Just very simply, Jim, if you want to add on to that and explain what the situation or the process is?
Sure. As you can imagine, the cities in Broward County are just a little bit out in front of the other cities probably in the state to get on board with dealing with the issue of certain types of firearms and firearms in general. Right now, under state law, municipalities are prohibited from engaging in the adoption of any regulations regarding firearms under threat of penalty to the elected officials that adopt those types of regulations. So, this is a pushback in part against at least that as a component part. The resolution from the City of Wilton Manners was drafted by one of my law partners, Kerry Ezreal. They're taking a lead position. And then over the weekend, the City of Sunrise mayor circulated to all the cities in the Broward County League of Cities, this proposed resolution. They're very much the same in terms of the content and intent of them. And then it's for cities to get on board with what I think will be now a student movement that is probably taking the lead to change the point of view of the Florida Legislature and, and also federal legislative bodies as well. So, there's enough content in both of these that we could put together a resolution under the name of the City of Boynton Beach, maybe fine-tune it a little bit for some local issues for ourselves, and then bring it back to you at the next commission meeting for approval.
Yes. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just, we were presented these, you kind of read as we walked up, because it's in addition to the agenda, but I had time to read one, the Wilton Manners one, and, and I have no, no objection to lending my name to, to the resolution. I don't, there's one part that I don't agree with, but it won't stop me from supporting it. I'm a firm believer that you need to have uniformity in gun laws, so the ultimate solution would be at a minimum a state law or set of laws to regulate firearms, or even better, federal regulations that would apply to all fifty states in this resolution. It makes reference to allowing municipalities or local governments to write gun ordinances or regulations. I don't, I don't support that on a fundamental basis, but again, I won't oppose the resolution that ninety-nine percent of which I absolutely agree with. So, I support the Wilton Manners one just because I have read it, and I have not read the Sunrise one.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I sat here tonight, I'm just saying, you know, I'm glad that the young people in this country has taken a stand on gun laws. The reason I'm saying that is that tonight, as my phone kept burning up and it kept blowing up up here, I'm just saying, you know, you all might not be aware, but we had a fatality over at Isa Hester tonight, and I'm just saying, the parents are calling me, Mr. Bird is calling me, and these people are all upset, and I'm just saying, so, we do need to get a control on gun laws here in Florida. We need to do something about guns here in Boynton, and I'm just saying, you know, I don't know what's going to happen, but I'm just saying, and we tried to get ahead of this before this got to this point, but I'm kind of a little full right now, but I'm just saying, we do need to do something, and I know the police is doing all that they can, but I'm just saying, you know, many feel like that's not enough, but, and you all are taxed as far as you all can go, but I appreciate all that you all are doing, but I'm just saying, when it comes to kids, we just need to be more prevalent and make sure that they're a little bit more safer. I'm just saying, they out on the basket, on the football field. The kids are all scared now, and I'm, I'm just saying, for them to go through just parkland and now they're going through this tonight, I'm just saying, I'm kind of a little upset right now.
Yeah, I, I'm in concurrence with the, the board that, you know, we need to do something to help the, the federal and state government and showing our support for them to act as, as much as we can do. Right, there is, you know, there are statements of enough is enough and never again, and that's not happening. And so, we need the people that we elect in the state and federal level to step up, and we need to do this nationwide, you know, not just, or, you know, statewide. It's not just Palm Beach County that we need to go, I think, send this to. It's, it's almost, you know, every legislator that we can send this to. It's not just the, the governor, but it's everyone to let them know that Boynton Beach does not stand for non-action. We need to act for the safety... We need to act for the safety of our citizens, safety of our children, and the safety for ourselves. So I'm moving forward with the resolution from Wilton Manners.
May I speak on this topic, please?
Yes.
I'm very happy and glad that you guys up there finally come to talking about this. However, as Boynton Beach goes, we have 70,000 or 75,000 people, maybe more, people coming into work, so that swells the population. What about home rule? Don't we, am I missing something here? Don't we have a certain amount of home rule?
No. None whatsoever. It's a $5,000...
Can we get together with Delray, Boca, West Palm?
No.
Joe, when you get up there.
Florida statute, 7090.33 is the preemption. And the constitution.
Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I think this is a great idea. I hit my 20th anniversary teaching in about two and a half weeks, right before your birthday, Mayor Grant. And I, my first year teaching was the year Barry Grunau was shot and killed, and that was a not-so-great way to start my teaching career. And I've got to say, this is just absolutely terrifying to go to work every day. Several of my students know kids who died. My school is 10 crow miles, you know, as the crow flies away from Parkland. A lot of our kids have been out all week because they're so upset. They're planning protest marches. I'm sure Vice Mayor Katz can tell you that there are kids just walking out of schools every single day because they're either scared or they're protesting. And I think it would be great if Boynton Beach can be on the forefront of some kind of resolution, just so if nothing else, not that I want you to violate the laws and get in trouble, but at least so it sends a message. And I think that's a good idea. And I hope more cities do this, and I hope more, the cities start becoming proactive at looking at the schools and how they're laid out. I know my school's a disaster. We have one way in and out, and in a worst-case scenario, which we fully expect to happen because it's not if, it's when, and we know it because it's Boca and it's high-value targets. But, you know, we're all scared, and there's one way in and out of my school. And I would highly suggest that maybe Boynton should be looking at the actual physical makeup of the schools and see what they can do with the school board to, you know, bring a sense of peace and a sense of calm and a sense of security to everyone, not just with a resolution, but actually looking at what you can do to make the situation better. And thank you.
Hey, I'd just like...
Commissioner Romulus, and then Commissioner Casella.
Susan, thank you for your comments. I take issue with one part of what you said. You mentioned that Boca has high-value targets. Everywhere has high-value targets. All of our kids are high-value. And if any attack happens anywhere, then it is a problem. And so that's what I believe Commissioner Casella was trying to address here with bringing up these resolutions. I'm in full support of them. But I also ask for us to do something more than just go forward with this resolution. I ask for us to keep our legislators in Tallahassee accountable, keep our legislators in Washington accountable, because today alone, there was a motion to hear a ban on the assault rifle, and it was, it was voted no, I believe, 70-something, 230-something, I'm not sure on the exact numbers, but to not even hear it, let alone at least entertain the conversation. So this is a problem, and, you know, doing this resolution is a sign of good faith here in Boynton Beach, but I believe we as citizens and we as individuals, as elected officials, we have a job to do to make sure that the people who we elect to represent us in Tallahassee and in Washington are hearing the fears, are hearing the concerns of our kids, of our teachers, of our parents. This cannot continue. This will not continue, not in the world that I will raise my children in. This will not continue. So I ask for all of us to take a stand. I ask for all of us to do something instead of just sit here and send our thoughts and prayers. We must act. We must do something, because the world that I hope to bring my children, continue to raise my children up in, and that we will bring our future children into, cannot be like this. We cannot be scared as parents to drop off our kids in the morning. We cannot be scared as kids to walk into our schools during the day. This cannot continue, and I ask for all of us to take action. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the commission for taking this and letting it move forward here. We're going to craft one of our own resolution that fits our city here, and our needs and our concerns. So I'd just like to thank the commission for accepting this and allowing it to move forward.
Yeah, if we can get statistics from our police of all the different types of gun violence that has occurred here over the past few years.
I do want to mention one last thing. I do want to be very clear that what we're asking for, or at least what I personally am asking for, is common sense gun laws. I'm not asking for us to repeal guns. I'm not asking for us to take away individual Second Amendment rights. I have a concealed carry license. I believe in the Second Amendment and the ability for us to protect ourselves and carry arms, but I also feel that we need to do it in a way that's common sense and protect others that, that just should not be put in harm's way by individuals who should not have guns and should not be allowed to receive the ability to use those guns. So that's what I'm in favor of, and I hope that we articulate that in the resolution that we propose here in Boynton Beach.
Further discussion? Saying none? Moving next to Vice Mayor's Item C, Rep. for the Quantum Park Overlay Development District Board.
Right, so, and legal might be able to weigh in exactly on who we might be able to appoint and what their authority might be, but on March 2nd, there's the annual meeting of the members of the Quantum Park Property Owners Association. There will be an election held. We, as a city, I believe, own property and therefore have voting rights, and given the, at least my desire, and I think the board's desire, to keep, keep the quantum issues moving forward and try to get things going over there, I think it's important that we send a representative to exercise our right to vote in our interest.
I think I was the one that held the proxy last time. And what is the date and time?
That would be March 2nd.
7 o'clock PM at the Hampton Inn, Boynton Beach, on Gateway Boulevard.
I got, I got plans, yeah.
Can't go?
I mean, yeah, I got a lot of things going on.
Vice Mayor, are you able to go?
Yeah. It's a fun, fun time tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
You're being voluntold.
This is coming up on almost two years that all this Quantum Park related stuff is, two years since I've been up here almost, and many more years of issues, and this is one step in the process to potentially remedying some of these concerns and moving things forward, so I will gladly.
Well, thank you, and...
Oh, he's good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Do you need a motion from us?
Nope.
Just a consensus that...
Yep, there is consensus, and I also wanted to let you know that the Children's Service Council also gave me their proxy, so I'll speak to them to see if you don't mind.
So I have more power.
Yes. And then we are on Item C. You said you wanted a special meeting?
Yeah, so, or to, you know, to get the board's consent, not the Quantum Park Property Owners Association, but the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District, which is a distinct thing, even though it sounds very similar. Things have been changing with the Overlay Dependent District Board. They've become more efficient, they've cut costs, they're saving taxpayers money in the long run, and there are certain parcels in the overlay district that might be up for development. They're owned by private property owners that have interest in developing them. I met with, with both parties that seem to own the remaining undeveloped plots. Basically, the Overlay Dependent District Board has, I believe, you know, directed or through a vote, asked the city to kind of give them some direction, because we're the, I guess, you know, the creator of the overlay board, so they want our direction on this. There's opportunities to move additional residential apartment development. There's the Eco Park, and speaking to one of the property owners in there today, there was talk of affordable and workforce housing adjacent to the Tri-Rail off of High Ridge. So there's a, a number of reasons to sync up with the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District and hear from all the various parties that are trying to get stuff done but are constantly embroiled in these personal, you know, fights with each other. If we can get involved, give our opinion, give direction to the Overlay Dependent District, I think they have a single representative for the board who happens to be a city employee, so it'll be easy enough to get that employee here for a, for a special meeting, just to get up to speed and see what we can do to direct the Overlay Dependent District or give recommendation to them to move some of this stuff forward and get this development online and possibly build that park and cut taxes for residents. There's a lot of benefits, I think, in continuing to push this forward, because it's just been bogged down for years and, you know, and disputes, and we can move this stuff forward. This isn't related to the lawsuits, so the potential development that I'm referring to is not related to the litigation that we're bogged down in as well, so we can, we can push this stuff forward. I'd like to see that type of meeting.
When would you like it?
Um, I could have staff reach out to everybody. I don't know if it would take more than...
Because we, we have a couple of meetings in March, the 6th, 13th, and 20th. Do you believe we can do it by the 20th?
Um, I would, I would leave it to staff. It's not something that's so urgent that we need to jam up the schedule further, but the sooner the better.
Okay, so, but on a regular city commissioners' meeting, or before a CRA meeting? Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Staff could reach out to everybody to find their schedules and see an applicable date.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
And last is 13B, Jim.
Request for this closed-door session in the Sharon Tasha Ford versus City of Boynton Beach case is for half an hour to 45 minutes of your time on April the 17th.
I...
Or the regular commission.
I'm, I'm not going to be here, so if the board wants to move forward.
What was the date again? I'm sorry?
April 17th. If you like, I could come back at the next meeting with some alternative dates. We are coordinating this with one outside council, so...
Fine with the 17th.
Otherwise, I would say whatever date you want to do it is good, but need to make certain...
I can do the 3rd or the 10th.
17th is fine with me, you know, just come back with your alternate days and we'll make a decision.
Okay, tentatively the 17th, and...
Yep.
Maybe we get the mayor's proxy.
I got it done. All right.
All right, thank you.
And the only other thing that I forgot to announce is that we have Coffee with a Cop this Saturday, what is it, 8:00 to 10:00 AM over at McDonald's on Federal. No. Yeah. All right. Anything else from the commission?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.